I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask all of you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance. All right, welcome everybody in attendance this evening, and I welcome our viewers on television. Just a housekeeping announcement, the electronic school bug, we're having a little trouble with the server. Our Chromebooks will work, but we will not be able to follow the meeting up here, and that means it might not go out on television as well, so we'll probably, you know, we'd have to deal with that until they repair the server, from what I'm told, so. Having said that, is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who would like to address the school committee who isn't already on the agenda? Seeing no hands, I will now move to Plymouth North High School for our student representative report.
Thank you. The Plymouth Public Schools Guidance Department will be offering a college aid night on Wednesday, March 1st, at Plymouth South High School, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. This event is open to all students of all grade levels, and their parents help prepare and support them through the college financial aid process. The AP exams will begin on Monday, May 6th, and continue through Friday, May 17th. Please check the website for specific dates and times. The junior prom is Friday, May 17th, from 6:30 PM to 10, from 6:00 PM to 10:30 PM, at the Indian Pond Country Club. Tickets will be on sale from April 8th to April 26th, the week before and after April break, at all lunches, during A2, and after school in Ms. Brady's room. Tickets are $80, check or money order only. Checks need to be made out to PNHS SAF. You will not be allowed to purchase a ticket if you owe the cafeteria money, owe a book to the library, or a teacher, owe a uniform or equip, or owe a uniform or equipment to the athletic department. If your guest does not go to Plymouth North, they need a guest form. Your guests, if you, and guest forms can be found in Student Services for students that do not attend Plymouth North. Guest forms must be filled out correctly, and you must have a copy of your guest's ID to purchase a ticket. Once you purchase your ticket, you will place yourself at a table. You may not save seats for friends who have not bought tickets yet. See Ms. Brady in room 347, or Mrs. Glyn in room 247, with any questions. PNHS graduation will be held on Saturday, June 1st. Plymouth North has the morning graduation this year, which begins at 9:30 AM. This event will be held on Plymouth North High School's Mario J. Romina Field. In the event of inclement weather, this ceremony will take place in the gymnasium. And the following are some upcoming senior events. Senior final exam schedule, Monday, May 20th through Thursday, May 23rd. Makeup exams will be Friday, May 24th. Hypnotist night, May 22nd. Last day of classes, May 23rd. Class day, May 24th. Graduation, May 28th. Dinner dan, graduation practice, I'm sorry, May 28th. Dinner dance, May 28th. Another graduation practice, May 30th. Convocation, May 30th, and graduation on June 1st. 19 DECA students will travel to Orlando, Florida, on Friday, April 26th, to compete at DECA International Competition. 2019, 2020 bus applications were sent home electronically in order to take advantage of the discount rate please pay by the end of the school year. This year, every student must fill out a bus application and confirm if they are a bus rider, walker, or a driver. Please contact the main office if you do not receive a copy. The 5th Annual Empty Bowls will take place on Thursday, May 9th, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM, at the Plymouth North High School cafeteria. The cost is $10 per person. Enjoy a meal of soup and bread with live entertainment and a silent auction. 18 students will travel to Marlborough to compete in the Skills USA competition. They will leave on Thursday, April 5th, and will, and will return on Friday, May 27th. That is all.
Okay, thank you. And now, South.
Hi, guys. Our 2019 Spring Art Gala will take place on the 25th of April at 6:00 PM in the Black Box Theater. Please join us as we celebrate the accomplishments of our talented artists out from the south. And our Spring Acapella Concert will take place on April 27th and 26th at 7:00 PM at North High School. So, South Ave is joining Plymouth North High School acapella groups, which will, which is sure to be a wonderful night. Our musical Anything Goes will take place on May 2nd, 3rd, and 4th at 7:00 PM. The Theater Guild has been working extremely hard, and they are excited to have everybody performing the Tobert Musical of Laughs, doing, dancing, singing, and acting. You guys should all come to that as well. The 2019 AP exams will take place from May 6th through the 17th at St. Bonaventure's Parish Church. AP registrations will be done during K Block this week. The 2019 CCTE Senior Showcase will take place on May 7th at 7:00 PM in the cafeteria. You guys are also all invited to come see all the amazing projects our senior technical studies students have been working on. The junior prom assembly will have a special presentation of Taylor's Story on May 8th at 9:30 AM in the Performing Arts Center. Taylor's mother shares her story of the death of her daughter on prom night due to alcohol consumption, which is a very important message for all of our juniors and seniors. The Plymouth South High School Spring Choral Concert will take place May 8th at 7:00, again in the Performing Arts Center. And our junior prom is May 10th at 6 o'clock at Indian Pond Country Club. Our annual Top 10 Breakfast will take place May 16th at 8:00 AM at Southside Fair, which is our culinary department. This is one of the best events of the year, as we recognize our top 10 seniors in the class of 2019. Best of luck to our Skills USA students as they travel to Marlborough for the state competition. 34 students will compete in their trade-related areas, and our state officer, Maria Baker, will be on, will be running for a second term on the state leadership team. We wanted to wish everybody good luck. And on April 4th, I was very, very happy to be a part of with the tourniquet and wound pressure training. It was training for our sophomore biomedical students, as well as the north sophomore biomedical students. It was overall a great experience. It's some, it's a life skill that I never thought I would need, but I'm glad that I have now. Afterwards, there was a presentation followed up for the biomedical students that I got to sit in on too, with some real-world experience from Bedna and a, another doctor, just about schooling, typical cases that they see within the field. And I think, although that stuff makes me want to pass out, it was really, really good and really interesting for the biomedical students, so I was very happy to be a part of that, and thank you for bringing that into our schools.
He made it on TV, too.
I know. You know, if you guys saw that.
Thank you very much, both of you, for that report.
Thank you.
We have a school improvement plan here this evening, Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we have the Cold Spring Elementary School Improvement Plan, and we have Principal Chris Morgan is here, along with her school improvement council, school improvement team, and they are here to present the Cold Spring Elementary School Improvement Plan for 2019, 2020. Welcome.
Thank you.
You can take it away.
All righty, thank you so much. We're happy to be here this evening. First, I'd like to thank the school committee for coming out to our school about a month ago, to take a look at our school, what we've been working on. And basically, the tour that we gave was really representation of our final school improvement plan that we just finished up, all the things that we've been working on. So, I was so happy to be able to show you that, and have the students show you what we've been working on. So, but I would like to introduce my team. I have Barbara Pagnati, Maria Terranova, and Kat Crampf, and Mr. Rick Couldmore could not be here. He was going to be here, but he was not feeling well, so, but he's a big part of our team. So, thank you for all the work that they've done. So, I guess I'd like to start, just give a little information about our school, and then go right into the video. But right, currently, right now, Cold Spring, we have about 218 students. We have about 14% receive special education services, 10% receive English as a second language services, and we have 51% free and reduced lunch at this point at Cold Spring. So, our school improvement plan for last year, we focused on the leader in me, which is our foundation of everything that we're working on, in, in our family engagement and our academic achievements. So, I'd like to show you the video, and show what our students shared with you, and then go from there. So, these are our student lighthouse leaders. So, they will take you on a tour of our school, and tell you about all the wonderful things that we're doing here at Cold Spring.
So, this is our paw wall. Students who earn paws get to sign their name, and it's displayed here for the entire school to see. Students can earn paws for demonstrating that they are following the seven habits, and going above and beyond to be a good role model here at our school. Our school is a leader in me school, which means every day we work on learning and using the seven habits to help us be the best students that we can be.
First thing we would like you to notice is the incredible artwork on the walls, here at Cold Spring. Ms. Moska does a great job inspiring each of us to create beautiful artwork. Our school is incredibly lucky, since all the specialists work hilarity, to make what we learn in specialists integrate what we learn in the classroom.
Literacy is something that is very important to us here at Cold Spring, and we are constantly working on ways to help students improve their reading. This fall, to kick off the reading incentive program, 5th graders presented the Giving Tree Play to the entire school. And then, students who completed the most reading over the summer got to silly string Mrs. Morgan.
Oh.
Another way, another way we are working on encouraging student literacy is by tracking students' reading success. As we visit Ms. Rosen's 5th grade classroom, notice the way that students have tracked their progress in reading this year.
Now that you know a little bit about how we are goal-setting here at Cold Spring, we want to bring you into a classroom where you can see a lesson on goal-setting. Mrs. Bushnell's 4th grade students will be working on their goal-setting notebooks.
Even kindergartners are working on improving and tracking their progress in reading. Now, let's go in to see what these smart kindergartners are working on.
Five days of reading for 25 minutes, so guess what we get to do on our thermometer?
Huddle in our next section.
So, what you saw in that video represents pieces of the Leader in Me, but everything that we're working on for our improvement. So, with the Leader in Me, this year, we, we always had a lighthouse team, and we have a couple of members on this panel that are part of the lighthouse team, and that's the core group of teachers, about eight teachers, that develop and lead the way for the rest of the staff on the things that we're going to work on for culture, academics, and leadership. And so, this year, what we infused into our staff meetings is, once a month, we have our Leader in Me staff meeting, and then we break into action teams. So, there's an action team for leadership, culture, and academics, and those teams of teachers create goals, and they work towards those goals for the school, and we do it building-wide. So, that also went into our academics. So, as you saw, the students had the, their WIG notebooks, their wildly important goals. So, this year, we focused on a whole-school reading goal, so that was towards fluency and comprehension, and every grade level worked towards that goal in the different ways, because it's different from kindergarten all the way through 5th grade. And as you can see, some of the bulletin boards that they, each grade level used to track that progress, was it strategies that they used to work towards fluency? Was kindergarten building their stamina? What did they do, and they outwardly showed that? But in their goal notebooks, each child had a reading goal, and they tracked that progress. So, everyone was part of this process, and we worked towards it together. For our family engagement, from our past improvement plan, we did a lot with the arts integration. Ms. Crampf and Ms. Moska worked with the classroom teachers, and they're constantly infusing the arts into the curriculum. And then, we were always working with our coaches for grade-level PD, working in the classrooms, and then keying in on specific things to help improve school, the students' improvement. But, so when we look at this, we have care, so collaboration, this is for, everyone needs to work together in order to make this work. Parents, students, and teachers, our community. Academic achievement, students are aware of what they need to work on through their goal-setting, their wildly important goals. We'll talk about WIGs, and you think with the end of mind, how are you going to track that, and how, what are you going to do to achieve that? Respect for all, using the seven habits. Seek first to understand, then to be understood, make positive choices, and take ownership. And then, excellence, we all need to work with the end of mind, put things first, things first, and sharpen the saw. That means that you need to take care of yourself, and that we're all working on that together. So, what we hope to get out of our new plan is increase student achievement, you know, strong educational practices, supporting the individual learner, and establish a school community that's committed to supporting all stakeholders, students, parents, and our So, moving forward, our goals are built upon our last goals, and with the Leader in Me, it's layers, it's a process. We're just in the beginning process, so as we get deeper and deeper in this, that we're going to get stronger and develop more goals that are going to continue to make our school stronger. So, our first goal will continue to develop in the Leader in Me. We're going to, for our goal two, enhance our academics and try to close those gaps with the achievement gaps within our subgroups. Goal three is to develop and support social, emotional health through the Leader in Me and the Second Step, and then increase our parent and communication engagement. So, I'm going to turn it over to Barbara for our first goal.
Hello, everyone. So, our first goal is to further develop in the Leader in Me process to empower student leadership and life skills. And I could read to you the slide, but I would rather share a story that really demonstrates the impact that Leader in Me has had on our school community, our students, and our teachers. So, several weeks ago, before April vacation, one of our teachers was faced with a health crisis. She ended up needing to have targeted treatment on her face, and was told that it was going to be minimally invasive, not a big deal. She had the treatment, and the treatment turned out to leave her with a chemical burn across her face, which was painful, disfiguring, embarrassing, but even so, as gritty as we all are, she came to school, and she worked with her kids in 3rd through 5th grade. When I saw her in the hallway, we talked, and she fought back tears, because she was still in pain, she was starting to turn the corner, but she shared with me that she was amazed by her students, by all of the students, really, in grades 3 through 5, who she worked with. Because when she came to school, she expected maybe a sideways glance, maybe she would hear an unkind comment. When she went home on the weekend, she didn't go out, she stayed at home. But when she came to school, she didn't have any of that. She had children treat her with kindness, she had children demonstrate empathy, ask if she was okay, ask what they could do for her, and, and it went throughout her process of healing. And she knows that I'm on, with Leader in Me, and I'm very involved, and she said, "I really think it was the Leader in Me. I think that this program has helped our kids change." And she was on the verge of tears, and she was just so proud of her kids, and so happy to be part of our community, and I think that really speaks to what Leader in Me is doing for us at Cold Spring, and how, not only does it impact the kids and their learning, but it's helping us to help them be the best that they can be, and to really create leaders that we want to lead as we move forward. So, that's what Leader in Me is doing for us at Cold Spring.
I am speaking to develop and support the social and emotional health of students through the Leader in Me and Second Step program. Excuse me. To utilize the Leader in Me process and Second Step curriculum is to promote social and emotional learning, to increase self, self-student confidence, leadership, and social connections with peers. Some of the benchmarks that we've been following, or will be following as well, is to implement the Second Step lessons weekly within the classroom setting, to implement student learning of the seven steps through integration into the core curriculum. Further development and implementation of the seven habit lessons are used for morning meeting. Professional development will be provided to support the child's study process, to further support the implementation of a tiered approach to instructional practice. Identify Tier 1 and Tier 2 supports for academics and social and emotional learning. The outcome, to, to increase student awareness of personal responsibility, both academic and behavioral, to increase the number of respectful and positive leadership initiatives.
Fabulous. Hello, everyone, it's nice to see you again. I am doing Goal 4, which is to increase parent communication and engagement opportunities at our little Cold Spring. And as you all know, it takes a whole village to really raise one child. And as the music teacher, where I get to see them in a lot of after-school activities, and get to really collaborate with a lot of parents, I have seen such a huge change because of the Leader in Me with our parent engagement. So, every single time we get together, we take out a survey and send it out to parents, and about half of the parents handed it back last year. And last year, it was like 68% of parents said that they wanted more communication. So, we said, "Okay." We, we made the simplest changes to some really bold, exciting ideas that we're excited to, to start next year. Even the simplest thing at Open Health this year, Ms. Morgan completely changed the game, and instead of just having them kind of move around in their classrooms and have it be more open, we were able to have grade-level meetings, where she gave very clear expectations of what they were going to be learning academically, but also being able to welcome and introduce them, meet staff, and just setting that tone made a complete difference. We also created lots of fun sessions, both academic and just for fun, from our game night that we did, which was super fun, to a few math nights and writing sessions as well. We're also doing this really cool thing that I'm excited for. On our Facebook page, we're going to have teachers do little, like, how-to sessions, so I might do like a five-minute lesson and be like, "This is how you sing sol-ami in tune." And then, I might go and be like, "All right, parents and students, sing sol, mi, sol," and have the parents be part of a music lesson. Because a lot of the times, parents want to be involved, but might not have the ability to come in at certain times, so we're going to try to use technology to bring them in as well. I will say, because Cold Spring is such a fabulous, small school, it's really, really meaningful that all the staff, as well as the parents, we kind of all know each other's faces, and I've had so many parents come up to me and say, because of the goals that the Leader in Me are making the children set, they're seeing those goals happen at home, which is what you want, because it takes a village.
And this year, to key on that, we started having a, we're reading the book Charlotte's Web. We started that over vacation, so every night, there's a mystery guest reader, and so we wanted to pilot that and try that this year with putting the teachers out, and we're getting good response to that, and so it's been kind of nice. Next year, we can do some kind of flipped classroom, so we bring the parents into it. So, now, I'm going to turn and go back to, they talked about the fun stuff, I'm going to talk about academics, which still can be fun, but I just wanted to point out that last year, we had significant growth at Cold Spring, just because of the many things that we're doing, and the hard work of our teachers, and the professional development that we're doing. We had a growth of 56.3 for ELA and 52.3 for math, so therefore, Cold Spring became a school of recognition for those efforts, but even though with that, we still have a lot of work to do. So, for our goals moving next year, we're going to continue with our professional development, keying on specific things that we need to use to strategize with student data to meet our needs of our students. This year, like I said, we set a reading goal. Well, next year, we're going to set another reading goal, but have it even more detailed, and now, set a math goal. So, we will track that building-wide for both, both curricular areas. And to do that, in part of our staff meetings, we're going to have reading and math instructional teams. So, I'll have the staff sign up for either reading or math. We'll look at our data, and they'll set goals as an action team, and we'll take a look at how we are working, and what we're going to do as a whole team next year with those two areas. We're going to continue to focus on our Tier 1 and 2 RTI strategies to help students meet their individual needs, and then, students will continue to work on their goals, and that's just going to get deeper and richer every year. And then, we are working as a staff to bring awareness about absenteeism. So, that's where we're going. So, hopefully, with all of these things put together, we will have a strong outcome. We'll have students that are really in charge of their learning and with positive outcomes. Any questions?
That was a very good report. Committee members? I just want to highlight, I was looking at on your other, on your other, I don't know what it, not, not this one, the other one that was in the package, the spreadsheet of the MCAS numbers, just very impressive, comparing 17 and 18 all across the board, the numbers just are just going in a wonderful direction.
Yeah, we're moving in the right direction. We're moving towards, you know, if you were in these improvement, you're moving to progressing, and you're, we're moving in the right direction, so, which is, which is a great thing. That's due to all the hard work that everyone's doing.
And in the report, it says you're a school of recognition. Tell us about that.
So, we made a significant amount of growth and achievement in our scores, so we had a lot, a big improvement. So, therefore, we were rated as a school of recognition by the state. So, actually, on June 7th, we're going to receive a certificate for that effort, so, which is pretty good.
Yeah, that's excellent. The scores, the scores are excellent.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Stay dry. With the permission of the, of the committee, I will, I will take the field trips out of water, so the people who are waiting for the field trips can do that now, and they can get out. I think there's a little, I don't hear the rain right now, so if you come up quick and talk, you can get back out to your car.
Yes, the first one we have tonight is the Plymouth South High School field trip, and this is for Roger Williams University Tour in Bristol, Rhode Island. This is an out-of-state field trip, and this is, I think Mr. Han is here tonight to present information, but this is to Roger Williams, and Mr. Han, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Part of our school improvement plan last year was to expose our students more to post-secondary education opportunities. So, we have started, our last year, the Junior College Road Tours, and so we went to visit three schools last year. We also started that in the Freshman Academy as well, they visited three schools last year and the year before. And so, we're off to pick some different schools and colleges and universities. It takes us, two of the three take us out of state, so we're just here for your permission to take the students across the border to Rhode Island.
So, it's for Roger Williams and Johnson and Wales?
Yes.
We have a motion from, from Ms. Burgess, seconded by Kim. Michelle, excuse me, my brain is not catching up to the meeting. I can move the agenda up, but not, not this one. Okay, is there any question on, on the field trip? Okay, we'll take that vote then. And that's both field trips.
Do two different votes.
Oh, we have to do them separately, okay. Thank you.
That was the Roger Williams.
Michelle, did you vote?
I can't vote. Oh, oh, now I can, all right. I was thinking.
Okay, so that was the Roger Williams. Everybody voted in favor?
Yes.
And now, we'll do the Johnson and Wales.
I'll make a motion to approve the Johnson and Wales trip.
Thank you, seconded by Ms. Hunt, on a question? Okay, the vote, please. Okay, everybody vote in favor. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
And now, we have a field trip out of the country. Dr. Maestis?
Yes, tonight, we have, let me go back up to that, I just bypassed it. Let me just get you on the right agenda item. And this is a joint field trip, Plymouth North High School, Plymouth South High School, and this is to Bordeaux, France, and we have Matt Harpenido and Michelle Lewiston here. They're here to present this information to you. It is one of the trips that we do that are, it's a combination, and we have done this trip before, and they're here to present it again. And we have done this trip before, and they're here to present it again.
Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you so much for hearing from us tonight for our French exchange proposal. I'm Michelle Lewiston, so I teach French, and I'm the Foreign Language Department Chair at Plymouth North. I don't know if this is loud enough. And with me is Matt Carpanito, who you know is a Spanish teacher and department chair at Plymouth South. And I also have Nick Davis, who teaches French along with me at Plymouth North. So what we're proposing is a French exchange similar to what we've done in the past, but with a different school. So we're working with a tour company, the same tour company that the Spanish exchange works with. They've matched us up with a school near Bordeaux, France, which is in the southwest, in a southwestern region. We're looking for our students to leave, to depart from Boston on April 15th, and that would be an overnight flight. So they would attend school for most of that day, and we'd bus them. We talked about getting a bus for them to get up to Logan, and they'll miss two days where they attend school in France. They would be with their host families for that weekend. And the school is on their vacation at the same time as we are. So they'll be, we'll have arranged events for them to attend during, I think it was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. After that, they would go as a group to Paris. In Paris, they'd stay in a hotel, along with Nick, who will be chaperoning, and Asia Beach, who is a French teacher at Plymouth South. There will be a tour, a travel guide from the company with the group in Paris during the whole time. And we don't know how many students will be attending yet, because we haven't, of course, had the students sign up. But based on our meetings, it looks like maybe about 20 students would be attending. And we're looking to have them return on April 25th, which is a Saturday. I think that is about it. The cost of the trip is actually more reasonable than our past company. It's, depending on the group size, it's somewhere between 26 on the lower end to possibly closer to 28. Our previous company was quoting us closer to 3,000. So we're happy that this is a bit lower and more reasonable.
Okay. Committee members with questions? Ms. Badger.
I guess my only question is, how was it this vacation? Because you guys were just over there, correct?
So we didn't go this vacation. We had a group that went last year, but they did, it wasn't a full exchange last year, they just did a homestay. And they had a really nice time. But we, I really wanted to bring back the full exchange of the students coming and staying with us in the fall.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
So you've answered my question, I think. This is a 10-day excursion, but, and they're missing three school days here, but they're going to do them over there.
So yes, they'll miss two school days here. They'll attend school on the Wednesday here and just leave potentially early. It will depend on the flight time, which we don't know yet. They don't book that this early in advance. But they would attend school on the Wednesday, maybe leave a little early, but they will miss Thursday and Friday to attend school there. Exactly.
To attend school in France, okay. Which I think is a great, great opportunity. Ms. Badger.
I moved, though we approved the trip for April 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Selly is the second. Are there any questions on it? Okay, we'll take the vote. Okay, everybody vote in favor.
Great. All right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Now, we have a program update. Dr. Maestis.
Yes, tonight, we have a program update, and we have a number of programs all-in-one, our special education program, Title One, Plymouth Family Network, developmental preschool update, and Mrs. Rogers will be coming up, along with, we have a slew of staff here tonight. We have Denise Tobin, Kim Capel, and Kathleen Campbell. They're all here to provide information on our early childhood initiatives, special education, and Title One. So there you go. So Stacy, are you going to kick this off?
I'm going to kick this off.
All right.
Welcome, everybody.
Hi, I'm Stacy Rogers. I'm the Director of Special Education. And I'm here to do a program update on Special Education 504 and Title One. And then, my colleagues will present on Plymouth Family Network and the Early Childhood Program. Some of these slides are probably a little bit familiar, but not much has changed for the scope of our office. We did add a Rethinking Discipline initiative that my office recently, actually, not recently. We've been working on it for the past three years. They kept telling us that funding was going away, so I never included it. But three years later, we're still working towards it. So I did include it this year. I'm going to talk a little bit more about it later in the presentation, so I won't get into it now. But as you can see, we run a very, very, very busy office. And an integral part of my job and my office is to support the great work that our principals and teachers and staff are doing, like you heard at Cold Spring. This is, just reiterates our strategic commitment based on our strategic plan. And this just updates some of the data that we collect annually through our October SIMS report. You'll see a slight uptick in our district-wide special education percentage, up to 18.9%. And I have a couple of slides later that talk a little bit about sort of our socioeconomic and demographics throughout the district, which explains a little bit of that. Our next slide shows the disability trends over the last several years. We continue to see a little bit of a rise in our developmental delay, which primarily our preschool kids fit into that category, because we kind of not always know exactly what's going on when they're turning three and entering into our preschool. And then, we continue to see a rise in autism as well. The next slide just talks a little bit about the analysis of the last two slides that you have both, that you have seen. So basically, we've remained stable for the last several years, which is, which is good to see relative to the district total enrollment. And the number of students who require more restrictive settings is also stable. We're trending about between 78 and 80 students in out-of-district placements, which I have another slide that talks a little bit about our placement trends as well. And then, as I said on the slide previous, we continue to see some rises in autism and developmental delay. So I included this because I think it's important. It's, it's pretty prevalent right now, the rise in mental health issues across the state and across the country. And I think this sort of talks a little bit about sort of where our kids and our families are at. And I think it's pretty telling with regard to some, where some of our struggles are, with regard to, you heard Cold Spring talk about our social-emotional learning, and I'll talk about that as well. But one of our bigger initiatives this year is really embedding social-emotional learning across the district with regard to implementing second step in all of our classrooms. We were recently awarded a grant, Dr. Campbell, myself, and Dr. Halpin co-wrote a grant to help support our social-emotional wellness of our students across the district. So we're really trying to work towards impacting some of the trends that we're seeing across the district and across the state. I think it's also telling of sort of where the South Shore and Cape Cod is with regard to just the lack of providers out there who are able to provide social-emotional help for our students and our families. And this is just another slide from the Center for Disease Control with regard to one in six children ages two to eight. We're seeing a rapid, I guess, regression with regard to the ages that the students are developing these kinds of disabilities. This slide just talks a little bit about our placement data. So in Plymouth, we're hugely committed to educating students in the least restrictive environment and in all the categories with regard to full inclusion, partial inclusion. We're significantly below the state. So I think that that speaks to the hard work of our special education teachers and our general education teachers regarding trying to keep students in our, in our regular education classrooms. And I just included a quote from the HARE Report, which is now kind of getting a little bit old, but it talks a lot about keeping students in their general education setting and how important that is towards keeping kids on track towards graduation. This is just an update on our program review. Last year, we were in the middle of what is a six-year cycle. The Department of Education spent a good week here reviewing student files. So I'm happy to say that we are now done with that review and are now in complete 100% compliance with regard to the three areas of partial compliance that we were found. So what is new? So we're working towards an embedded, ongoing consultation model for professional development. So we're working with several consultants throughout the district. We're partnering with Landmark to work with our language-based learning disability students, and that's at Nathaniel Morton. And eventually, that will grow into PCIS as the students age up to middle school. We consult with Cheryl Delory, who is a consultant from Pilgrim Area Collaborative to help with our students in our social-emotional programs. Those are our care programs at PCIS and at West Elementary. And then, we have three board-certified behavior analysts who provide professional development for our life skills and ASD staff. And then, our special education department heads provide ongoing professional development for our special education compliance and support for our staff as well. We recently ran a pilot for 40 of our staff members to move towards digital assessments. So a big part of what special education does is every three years, students are reevaluated to continue, to determine whether or not they're continued to be eligible. And it's hugely time-consuming. It's very costly for the district to purchase updated testing materials, lug the testing materials, and then hand-score all of them. So Pearson actually had just come out with a new model of digital assessment using iPads. So we trained 40 of our staff, school psychologists, speech and language pathologists, moderate special needs teachers, to pilot the new Pearson online platform. The digital assessments are supposed to save about 30% of time. So those teachers are in the middle of utilizing that platform. And then, we are going to get back together in June to determine whether or not it's something that the district would like to move forward with. But right now, everybody is very happy with significantly, taking significantly less more time to test a student and to generate those reports. So that would be great if, if that was able to move forward. Panorama and social-emotional learning, so building capacity at the elementary level. We're utilizing, currently utilizing Panorama at the, at the middle school and high school level. And next year, we're planning for a full rollout K through 12. And this is with regard to the grant that Dr. Campbell and I wrote. So we received $115,000 from the state, and it was a competitive grant. It was a very quick turnaround time, so it was very quick to put, to put that together within about three days. But we were awarded the grant, so the plan for next year is to look at increasing professional development, consultation, continuing with our Gosnell partnership, and to roll out Panorama K through five. So we're very excited about that. So Rethinking Discipline, like I said, this was a statewide initiative that started about three years ago. They kept saying it was only going to be around for a year, but three years later, we're still involved. And myself and some assistant principals from both high schools go up to Lemonster, Massachusetts, every other month or so, and we take part in professional development that the state puts on. And basically, what it looks at, like, looks like is putting, looking at alternative discipline strategies for students and keeping students engaged in school. So it's a great initiative. I, you know, we report data to the state on an annual basis, and they continually give us feedback on what we're doing well and things that we need to continue to work on. Special education boot camp, this is something that we're working on for professional development last, next year, looking at putting more time and effort into our newer teachers so that we can retain them. And then, the last piece we've sort of talked about, it's the social-emotional learning grant for the $110,000, so we're super excited about, about that. And this is the social-emotional wheel. I don't know if any of the other school improvement plans have referenced this, but this is sort of the social-emotional competencies that we're trying to get students to be proficient at during their educational careers. Title One. So Title One provides financial assistance to schools with high percentages of students with low-income families to ensure that children meet challenging state and academic demands. Title One funds are allocated through a federal formula. It's based on census that's collected at the state level, and they're used to provide services that are in addition to what we already regularly provide within the district. These are our four Title One schools. We have three school-wide schools, and Manamatt is targeted assistance. These are some of our kiddos last year at our summer program. So the Title One program also provides a five-week summer program. And on Fridays, they spend, so Monday through Thursday is primarily academic, and then on Fridays, they get to spend the day at Camp Clark.
Apparently, in the mud.
Yes. I guess it was raining, like today. This just talks a little bit about what some of the Title One funds go towards. 12 part-time interventionists within those four buildings. Funds a part-time family engagement liaison, which helps with our ELL families. The summer program, which is a partnership with the YMCA for 100 students to participate in a five-week, five-day summer program. And then, our lending library, which is a family engagement initiative. It's at Hedge Elementary, but it's open district-wide. These are some of our Title One teachers at our holiday event at Hedge Elementary. Oops, I'll go back. We also have some fun sort of in-house field trips for our families. This is all-hands drumming with Tony. And these are kids, so he brings in the drums and, and there's a music piece. Mike Capel would be happy, right, Kim? And these are just pictures of our unified athletes. This is South High School and North High School. Any questions for special education?
Any questions on the special education? Ms. Badger.
Well, I have a question about the Panorama program. I don't know if this is for Dr. Campbell or both of you. Is that part of our, the new health curriculum that we're putting together?
It's not a curriculum, but it's a progress monitoring tool. So it's essentially, we can put all of our data, any data that we want to track and monitor on our students academically, behaviorally, emotionally. We can do surveys, behavioral health surveys with students, track that information, and monitor kids' progress over time. We can also start student success plans, share that across teams, transition it from elementary to middle. So it's really taking all of the initiatives that we talk about in our school improvement plans and what Dr. Rogers just said, and ties it all together. So we're all, you know, speaking the same language and on the same page. So it's not necessarily a curriculum, but it takes components of that. Yeah, it's, it's a very user-friendly.
We talk to them.
It's a very user-friendly tool that takes part of Aspen, but also a lot of the other, you know, interventions that we use and helps to track the success of how those things are going. So it's very, it's, when I say it's very user-friendly, I mean it's extremely user-friendly. It's been, it's been highlighted by Edweek, which is a publication that school systems read quite a bit, quite, quite often. And they're a local company, too, which is nice, and they're very, very responsive to us. So we're really excited to have a, you know, a true district-wide progress monitoring, student success intervention platform that's going to help us to really monitor kids' success.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
I have a quick question on the, on the wheel, on the social-emotional learning wheel.
Sure.
Where it says self-awareness, I assume that's where the children are learning to recognize their own emotions? Because nowhere else does, I'm trying to guess, where does that fit in?
Sure. Self-awareness, sort of how your behavior impacts other people and being more self-aware about, you know, when we talk about social skills, sort of reading a room, talking about, you know, if you walk into a library, these are sort of the social skills you use versus...
So that begs the question then. Where do the children learn to identify the emotion they're currently feeling at this moment, as I look at that wheel?
So where does that happen?
Where does that happen?
So right now, it happens through Second Step, which is embedded into our elementary school curriculum.
All right.
Also through PBIS and like Chris Morgan.
Okay. We've been talking about health here, and that question came up on our health discussion.
It would also be embedded in the health curriculum as well.
Yeah, I don't mean to interject like that, but within the, within that Second Step curriculum, the SEL curriculum, and the self-awareness, self-management, really being aware of how, you know, not only how your, your, you know, being aware of your own emotions, your state, and helping kids to regulate that.
Right.
And to better, you know, interact with their environment as well. But those are, those skills are in the Second Step.
Excellent. All right, next step.
All right. So do we want to do Plymouth Family Network next? Or Kathleen, what do you, you ready to go?
I'm ready.
Let it rip.
I guess I'm ready.
We'll do it early till...
Oh, there we are.
Plymouth Family Network, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Okay. There we are. Some cute pics. So you've seen this slide before. The Plymouth Family Network is funded by the Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant from the Massachusetts Department of Early Education by the Plymouth Public Schools. So these are some services that we provide. And there's no developmental or income requirements for membership, and all services are free.
So the parent-child home program is going to be rebranded by their, by their office. It has nothing to do with us, but they're rebranding to become the Parent-Child Plus. Their, this unique home visiting program, it will not change at all, other than the name and the logo. And the program helps to build parent-child detachment, school readiness, and school success for America's overlooked and underserved families. The program aims to intervene early in life and put vulnerable toddlers and their parents on a path to possibility. So National changed the logo by making sure the words "parent" and "child" were connected, touching and bonded, because the program brings families together, and they added the "plus" because of what gets added to children's lives. And so we will be rebranding this slowly over the next several months, but with a full changeover by September. So we actually did not coordinate this, but it's worked out perfectly. We've chosen to kind of focus on what we're doing at Plymouth Family Network with social-emotional programming. And that has come out of the results of our community needs assessment, which we completed last year. So this is just another version of that wheel that Stacy showed you with, you know, some more specifics. And we shared this, actually, with our parents at our early childhood fair, which Kathleen's going to talk about in a little bit. So social and emotional learning is the process where children and adults develop essential social and emotional skills, knowledge and attitudes related to self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. And we actually can start these skills with the kids that we work with as, you know, young as infants. So when we were gathering our data for our needs assessment, 100% of the early childhood educators that we took data from reported that they're seeing a lack of social-emotional skills in their students. And educating parents and caregivers on the importance of social and emotional skills, such as recognizing emotions, regulating emotions and behavior, empathy, conflict resolution, and making good choices, has become a real focus for our programming. So we focus a lot on social-emotional learning in our playgroups. We have three eight-week sessions per school year. We've presented in the past about the playgroups that we offer. We offer seven playgroups, serving children from birth to preschool. And playgroups are developed by the parent-child educators using the Massachusetts Early Learning Standards and Guidelines for infants, toddlers, and preschoolers, which not only have academic ideas, but also some social-emotional learning standards. And we've, because it's been our focus this year, these particular standards are displayed in the classroom for parents to see how these curriculum areas are targeted. All playgroups are structured, have structured free play, followed by snack and story and circle time. Susan West is a collaborator with us. We're very lucky to have her work with us. She comes to the baby group twice a session, and she really not only focuses on the infants, but also the parents' social-emotional health and well-being. So what Kim mentioned, our early childhood fair this year, we piggybacked on the district's theme of "This Is Me" and building social and emotional skills. We had social-emotional crafts and activities, a feel-good dance party, a Feelings Film Fest, which was just a short 10-minute loop of some Sesame Street videos about regulating emotions and things like that. A Todd Par, we had a Todd Par Story Walk about the Feelings book, and we asked preschools that came to our fair to piggyback on our theme and have activities related to social-emotional health with their activities. We also did some social-emotional programming with our parents. We offered a mindful parenting training program in collaboration with the Early Childhood Center. A lot of their parents came to it as well. The program was facilitated by Heather Nebulus, who's a certified mindfulness instructor and a mother of a child, a special needs child. The program educated parents on the science and benefits of mindfulness and how a practice of being mindful can enhance parenting skills, the parent-child relationship, and teach children how to manage their emotions. For the first time, we're going to be offering a yoga program, and we're offering this at Hedge this Thursday. It's going to be literacy-based with a focus on social-emotional skills. It's parent-child, and it's going to be facilitated by two kindergarten teachers that have some trauma-informed training from the Carver Elementary School. This is sort of a one-time thing, but we're working with Kristen Wilson from Hedge, and we're going to actually be offering a six-week program at Hedge in the fall for parents and children. And, you know, it will be a similar-type program and see, you know, what kind of success we can have with that also. We are also offering, we did this year and we will be again next year, it's called the POP playgroup, so it's playing on purpose. And it was a three-week playgroup this year. It'll be four weeks next year with Kelly Rodriguez from Early Childhood Mental Health Consultation. And it really focused on social and emotional skills, taking turns, sharing, asking for help, promoting language, and following simple instructions. We had 15 families take part this year, and we hope to have about the same next year. The families completed Social and Emotional Ages and Stages questionnaire, and were given the results of those, and we made referrals based on what we saw from those results. And it was really successful. So our kindergarten readiness celebration, we piloted this last year at the library. We weren't able to use the library this year because they're doing construction. So we had it at PCIS this year, which worked out really well. It actually had more space, and we had almost 70 families in attendance. It was fabulous. So it was held to help families and preschoolers learn key skills for success in transitioning to kindergarten. So we had centers around the cafeteria. They're listed there, but social-emotional was one of them. We had students from the National Honor Society come help, and we had students from Falcon Pride, which is the honor society, well, sorry, the service organization here at PCIS. They were outstanding. We got so many compliments from parents about their help with the kids. Three teachers from the Plymouth Public Schools also participated at a center, and they were able to, parents and families were able to meet with them and answer any questions that they had. The Plymouth Public Library also came. They brought an iPad with them, so people, families and children that didn't have library cards could sign up for a library card right at the, at the event, which was great. And all in attendance left with a book about kindergarten, a toolkit for kindergarten success, which included Social Emotional Development Guide for 60-month-olds, and a stress ball with a handout about social and emotional learning and the benefits of using one. So these are just some parent comments from our surveys. And that was, actually, that little picture, that was one of our activities at the social-emotional center at the kindergarten readiness. So they had Play-Doh, and they had faces that they could match up with and make their own little faces, so. So that's, is it? Any questions?
Committee members with questions? It's a good presentation, a lot of information. Questions, comments? Okay, thank you very, very much.
We have, no, we have Plymouth Early Childhood Center.
Oh, there was one more left?
Yeah. Sorry. I'll go.
Next.
Can I have this? Denise Tobin, Director of the Plymouth Early Childhood Center.
Thank you.
This one? Yes, I think, okay. Okay. Oops. There it is, okay. Good evening, everyone. So I'm here to talk about our preschool program. And it was very difficult to kind of encompass everything that preschool does on one slide, but, you know, we are the foundation of a child's education. And we build on their social skills, language, academic development through instruction in the areas of social skills, play skills, independence, kindergarten readiness, and One of the things that you'll see in this presentation when we talk about our enrollment, many of our students come from early intervention, and some of them have had early intervention from birth. Some of them don't start having early intervention services until they're one, two, even just a few months before they turn three. So the transition from early intervention is a really important one. I look at it as we are their first experience in Plymouth Public Schools, and we want that to be an important, we want that to be an important part of the transition. So we do what's called a TPC meeting. It's a transition, transitional planning conference, and I do that with the early intervention case manager. And they will either come to PEC, or I go out to the home. And this year, I've been out to 32 homes to do that transition planning conference, and I think being out in the homes has really benefited the entire transition process. It gives me an opportunity to see the child in their natural environment, and it helps to guide what areas we're going to evaluate them in, because we can really see when they're home and with their families, what their needs are. And I'm really able to gain the information about their strengths and areas of need moving forward. I take a lot of time at the home and review the evaluation process with them, so they know exactly what to expect throughout the process. And that's made it a lot easier for families to go through. We are mandated to have a child who's been identified as special needs to start on their third birthday. So all the evaluations have to be completed, the meeting has to happen, and they have to be ready to go on their third birthday. So current enrollment. Currently, we have, well, as of April 1st, when I finalize this, we had 212 students. We are now up to 217 students that we are servicing at the Plymouth Early Childhood Center. So 75, we've had 75 referrals from intervention this year, and those have students who had birthdays from September 1st through September 1st of this coming year. And then we've had 48 parent referrals for evaluations this year. So we've been busy. We have 21 students in our full-day program, 20 students in outreach. So outreach are when students come in for either speech and language services. They don't come to a program. They just come in for their services, and that could be speech and language, OT, or PT. We have a language group, and those are for students who need a little bit more than what we offer in outreach. It's not just articulation, but it's their language skills are a little bit delayed. So they come for a 90-minute block, and it's all language, language, language for the time that they're there for the 90 minutes. And then we have eight students who we currently service at Head Start. So we have a great model. There are students at Head Start. We have, one of our special ed teachers goes out there twice a week, and one of our speech and language pathologists goes out there twice a week. And we're able to provide services at Head Start for those students. So it limits them having to travel back and forth on a bus to come and get our services here. And it also allows for those families who need a full-day program to stay in their full-day program, but also get the special ed services that they need. And we just held our lottery for our peers, and we had 102 families apply this year, which is pretty amazing. But unfortunately, we were only able to place 57, because that's all we had open for slots right now. So we have a waiting list. So some of the programs that we have, I talked a little bit about them, but the Integrated Preschool Program is a model where we have special ed students and our typical peers that I just talked about that are coming through the lottery and pay to come to our program. And in each of the integrated preschool classrooms, we can have up to 15 students. Eight of them are our peers, and seven of them are students with identified special needs and are on an IEP. We have two substantially separate programs. One is for students on the autism spectrum, and the other one is our Early Intensive Learning Center, which is for students who have significant cognitive delays. Our outreach, I already talked about. Our language group and our Head Start, we already talked about. So with an intensive preschool model, we have to have a lot of additional related support services. So we have speech and language, and the majority of our students all come in with communication delays. So we have four speech and language pathologists. Three of them are full-time, one is half-time, and we have a half-time speech and language assistant who we share with another school. We have an OT, a physical therapist, and then we have a teacher of the deaf and a teacher of the visually impaired who come and consult to our program. And then we also have a few students who are medically fragile, and the nurse is very involved in their care as well. So now the fun things. So there's a whole lot of learning going on in preschool, and a lot of that is done So we are also focusing on social skills development. One of the things we did this year, we chose the word kindness, and students can earn hearts and put it up on our kindness wall when they're recognized for doing something kind. A few of our teachers have had training in social thinking and are implementing that. Matt and Molly stories, these are just language-based stories where Matt and Molly, two little puppets, have some conflict, and they have to work out the conflict, and they talk about it with each other, and they talk about feelings and things like that through the Matt and Molly stories. And then we are also going to be adopting Second Step so that we can align with the kindergarten and the rest of the elementary school. So we just had our first Second Step training on the last professional development day. So these are just some pictures of students playing. Lots of times, students come in and they can maybe tolerate some parallel play, just playing with somebody next to them, and then we work towards the goal of having them have some reciprocal play and hopefully some reciprocal conversation in that, too. We take advantage of being outside as often as we can. Again, that supports their social development, cooperative play. So with literacy, students are read to daily. They have opportunities to retell stories. They have different opportunities for writing and drawing. The teachers have done several author studies this year, and we like to dress up and have some fun, too, in preschool. So there's lots of opportunities embedded in the day for math, just sorting, shapes, counting, identifying numbers. At a lot of the circles, they count each other as a way to practice counting, how many friends are there that day. So motor plays a huge part in cognitive development, building motor skills. It helps students to explore and access their environment. So there's all kinds of motor things that happen throughout the year. We did shaving cream ice skating in January. We had a hoedown in the fall, and just one of our motor activities that the kids do in the hallway on a rainy day. So for our caregiver support and trainings, for, for of our programs who have some pretty significant students in there, we, we do some community outings, and the parents go with their children and our teachers go. And they support the families in how to support their kids in the community, because a lot of our students have a difficult time accessing the community. So they've been to the farm, they've been to the library, and this haircut one was actually pretty amazing. So we have a parent who has a student who went through our program, who is also on the autism spectrum, and she recognized how difficult it is for a lot of families to get their kids to have haircuts. There's sensory issues, there's all kinds of things. So on a Wednesday, they opened up Supercuts, had a big sign inviting our families to go. So families had to sign up ahead of time who was going to go, and I think we had 12 families show up for a haircut that day. And she had activities for them to melt crayons, using hair dryers, to get used to the sound and everything, and every kid left there with a haircut. And some of those parents have never been able to get their kids to have a haircut. So that was pretty amazing. So we thank... So that was pretty amazing, so we thank Supercuts for that. Parent trainings are done either by our own staff or we have somebody come in. So this year, one of our teachers did a behavior training for parents and then we had Dave Dilly, who is a BCBA, come in and do toilet training and eating as parent trainings. And we have one more this year and our teachers are going to do that one also, train the parents. And we're still kind of going back and forth what the topic is because there's quite a few needs right now. And in addition to the community outings and parent trainings, our teachers also do home visits and they've been collectively to twenty-six homes as well. And in the homes, they work specifically with the parents on areas that they're struggling with with their own children and are supporting them there at home. So principal coffee. When I first came last year, I was here a couple of months and I tried to do this and I had a few people come. This year it's maybe been one or two more, so I'm going to keep at it and hopefully people want to come and talk to me and hear what I have to say. So we've had some, a lot of support for our program, a lot of collaborations. We have a great PTA who does all kinds of wonderful things for us. You can see in the picture we had Drums Alive come and they supported that and it was excellent. We had our first book fair this year, we did a one-book-one-school and they do an ice cream social every fall before school starts for the families to get to know each other. We've done some collaborations with PFN, the mindful parenting, How to Choose a Preschool, and just ongoing support for our families. There'll be families that come in and I'll run them right down to PFN to get some extra support. Being here at PCIS has opened up a lot of doors for us. We've been able to utilize the Blake Planetarium. The Babysitter Club has come down and worked with our students. We've had some science classes come to read books that they created. The Principals Council created activities for our field day last spring and there are students in this building who are earning time to help in the preschool. We've been invited to concerts and all kinds of great things. This year we participated in the Scholastic pajama program and we were able to, I think we had over two-hundred pairs of pajamas that we were able to donate to Scholastic and those went out to students with a book who were in need. And we focus specifically on pajamas for kids our age. We've had some parents come in and do some presentations. We had one come in and do Down Syndrome awareness and we had another mom and dad who came in and did a sing-along with us around the holidays. Dr. Brian Schmidt, who's a pediatric dentist, has come in, the Plymouth firefighters have come, so there's been a lot of great support for our program. And those are just some of the pictures. And last spring we had a guest teacher. And just some more of our, you can see the middle schoolers running their activities and Mr. Palladino even got in on it and did some face painting for us. So professional development, we've been very, very busy with professional development. So for the QRIS through the early ed and care, we just, after doing all of that, this year we just submitted our stuff online for Level Two and I just got an email that now they're ready for our hard document. So I have this binder, this big of evidence, and I just found out they don't want it in a binder, so I have to figure out another way how I'm going to send it to them and then hopefully with, we'll gain our Level Two status. And really it's not mandatory through early ed and care right now, but we're trying to do it so that we'd be eligible for more grants. A couple of grants have come out and you need to have like a Level Three or a Level Four to qualify for some of them, so we want to get that, so we can get some of those grants. And just some of the other things, Teresa Harmon has come and talked to us from, to the moon and back. We had gardening with Jackie Miller. And then one of our own teachers, you could see her there, she did a presentation to staff on some things that she's learned about, just about brain development and the need for universal design and how that supports students in the classroom. We've reviewed Second Step and social thinking. So this I'm excited about. So this is what we call our Red Wagon Award and it's staff recognition. So what I decided to do at the beginning of this year was that each week a teacher would nominate another teacher for, and I chose the Red Wagon this year. And basically it's about helping each other out, like how did you pull my Red Wagon? And every Friday morning, we read about the person because the person nominating has to write something about them and then they get their PIN and they wear their little Red Wagon PIN and they get their poem and their name goes in our big Red Wagon and they have a Red Wagon Award that goes outside their classroom. So it was just a way to have staff build each other up, so it's gone over very well and we like it. So now I have to think of something different for next year. That's it.
Very nice. Lot of information. So good, so good to hear, hear all the things that you do.
Thank you.
Haircuts.
Yeah, right.
Other questions, comments, observations, committee members? Ms. Badger?
I was going to say all the presentations were really, really informative, so thank you for taking the time to share everything with us. I mean, it's great. Thank you for all that you do.
You guys have a lot of work.
Ms. Frye?
I just wanted to thank Principal Tobin because during contract negotiations this year, we made a whole part of the contract about the preschool and we worked collaboratively with Mr. Pinto in the back and she took the time out working with Stacy, obviously, I don't want to thank Stacy, I want to thank Denise, but she wasn't part of negotiations, but we now have, the preschool teachers are now a real part of the document, which is a real goal to staff. So it's itemized and what they're, it used to just say, actually it said Oak Street. So we were able to put a whole side agreement together and it's embedded in the contract, so she put a lot of time in as well because I cannot rattle off their schedule for the life of me, so I know high schools well, so thank you Denise for that.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for your presentation this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you. Very good. Yes, we will in a minute. Is there anything under All Business that we have to address this evening?
We still have a policy, six-point-one.
A policy, all right. We jumped over because we did, yeah, we got six-point-one. All right, we'll do the policy and then we'll take a break after the policy.
Okay.
Medication policy, Dr. Campbell?
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. We've been here a few times with the medication policy, so we're glad to be back here. The last question that we had was regarding signatures and records, electronic versus paper, so we made sure that was addressed. Mrs. Raines has spent quite a lot of time with the Policy Subcommittee, so I thank her for her participation in this process. So in fact, all of the documents are electronically, the records are electronic, so those corrections have been made here to reflect that. Other than that, there were some minor revisions which we've made, but nothing real substantial since the last time that we presented this. If there are any questions, we'd be happy to answer them and Mrs. Raines is here also if there's anything, anything that we can answer.
Committee member have any questions about the policy? Go ahead.
My question is, on five-point-three, there's like, there's an asterisk and I don't know why, or maybe it was just on my iPad there was an asterisk, but, and I just didn't see where it referred to. Let me open it if I can.
Yeah, I do see that and...
Yeah.
It's probably a typo.
Okay, that's fine. I just didn't know if it was supposed to refer to something and I was totally missing it.
No.
I know.
But you caught it, so you passed the test. Yes, we will eliminate the asterisk, but...
Thank you.
Well, while you're looking, I'll bring up something and it'll give you a chance to look.
Okay, go ahead.
I gather we've had trouble getting nurses to go on field trips because we only have so many nurses and we have so many field trips.
It's a challenge.
So that's why this change is taking place, to have trained designees go on field trips to dispense the medication.
Certainly, so it certainly does help with simple medication administration. A majority of districts have this in place. As we said before, Department of Public Health allows for such exceptions. By no means can an educator be told that they will do this. This is an optional thing. It's clearly approved by the Director of Health Services and the school nurses as to which medic, you know, which individuals and medications would be allowed to be dispersed by a trained individual and that training would be very specific and personalized. But yes, this is, that certainly is one of the factors that would motivate that because we do have a lot of very good field trips and sometimes, you know, if you have someone who's taking a very simple medication and our policy is that a nurse will be there for that, so I think it will really alleviate those situations which we have a hard time, you know, getting nurses to, one, go on field trips and also take them away from the schools and to get substitutes for them.
Did you find, Ms. Badger, what you were referencing?
No, she had already found it. No, it was, that was it, I think, but yeah, just thank you for clarifying my question.
Any other questions? This is an action item, isn't it? Anyone in the Policy Committee on this? Nothing to add from the Policy Committee? All right. So have a motion? Ms. Hunt?
I'll move that the recommended changes to the policy, six-point-oh-four medication guidelines be accepted and approved as presented with the removal of the asterisks.
And Ms. Burgess is the second on that. Are there questions on the motion? I don't see any hands, so we'll take the vote. Okay, everybody vote in favor. All right, we're going to take a short break, so let's resume at eight-thirty, please. Thank you. Okay, we're back in session. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda here is All Business. Is there anything to address under All Business? Ms. Hunt?
I think the meeting that I wasn't here, Michelle addressed it, but the PFLAG Forum, the No Place for Hate, and Michelle actually might be addressing it under Committee Reports or Committee Things, but I just want to mention that in response to this, the No Place for Hate has picked that up and they're going to do a parent forum. And I just hope that, I don't know if we're sending it out through our channels to advertise it, but it specifically says, which I think is interesting on the flyer, "This program is being offered in response to the same program that was given at Plymouth South Middle School in January, especially for the parents who expressed interest in knowing about its content."
Can you send that to me?
Yeah, so I think it's, I think we should send it to those parents or whoever, general or, yeah, yeah. Make sure everybody sees it. And again, I didn't mean to steal Ms. Badger's thunder.
Yeah, it's on there, yeah.
Yeah, so, and I wasn't at the meeting where I think you talked about it before, so I just wanted to bring that up again. I'll send it to both of you? Okay.
Yep, thank you. Michelle, do you want to add anything to that?
No, no, we're just, we just hope we get attendance at the event. Thank you.
Anything else under All Business? New business? Committee members with anything new business for this evening? Right? Seeing no hands, the Superintendent's report, Dr. Maestis?
I have a few things to report on this evening. I want to touch upon the training that we had before vacation, Stop the Bleed, and I know Isabella brought it up earlier, but I want to highlight Bedna and Ms. Haywood and her efforts for... Well done. And I understand that, you know, a lot of these programs take a level of risk and they take a level of responsibility from a school committee to actually want to offer it and follow through with it. I think the Plymouth Public Schools has not shied away from topics of this nature and I think from the, probably the first hour of my knowing Ms. Haywood, she brought up this program and that was well over a year ago. And to see that it went from an idea to a program that I saw our students really engaged, our students really observing and becoming active participants and them truly understanding how this could benefit not only them but others and their future as perhaps health professionals, but just general citizens, I thought it was well done. It did get some level of coverage, but I will tell you that although Ms. Haywood was not on the national stage, she should have some level of national stage for her arranging this and motivating the purpose of having this available to our students because if you would just single out what the kids said in their interviews and what they said, the stuff that didn't make the newscast was powerful.
Yes.
And it was something that I was very proud of and to see that our students understood very clearly why they were in that space.
Yes.
And what we want them to learn and not only that, what our nurses were able to accomplish and help us to do. For us to get the quality of healthcare professionals in that school for the amount of time that we had, I don't even want to know what they get paid an hour, but I'm going to tell you, it was spectacular. They were spectacular. So hats off to Brigham and Women's, primarily hats up to Ms. Haywood for not only motivating it but for following through, helping us every step of the way to make that happen. So thank you so much. Tomorrow night, we put this thing together very quickly. I know I sent a, sent an email today and I sent a text message to you about tomorrow night. If you're available, we do have two national champions in the town of Plymouth. Ironically, they're both from Plymouth South High School and one graduated a number of years ago as a wrestler and another one is just a recent national championship from Bridge, champion from Bridgewater State. And, you know, they both have pretty unbelievable stories and the highlight is not necessarily their athletic prowess and what they've been able to do athletically, but college, the whole idea of going to college and being a college athlete and college was a mechanism to actually allow them to participate on the field is a highlight for tomorrow night. So we're going to do a joint presentation with the Board of Selectmen tomorrow night with both of those individuals. We were actually thinking it was going to be a week away from tonight, but, from tomorrow night, but the two...
I got moved from tomorrow night to the next.
Yeah, so, so it's scheduling with, you know, one college student and one, Vinnie is actually, you know, gainfully employed and has a family and it arranges their schedules to make things work. We finally got this hammered out today. So tomorrow night, if you're available, seven o'clock, at the top of the agenda. Also, we did have a number of trips over to the vacation and I want you all to know that Plymouth was very well represented, the different countries around the world. And I think the, we don't have an opportunity to really see the impact that they have when they're out doing what they do on these opportunities. Our students are doing wonderful things around the world to represent this community and they're not there doing sightseeing for eight hours and experiencing all these fancy meals or whatever. They are out there working, they are performing, they are teaching, and they're doing things that we want our kids to do to understand a globalized environment and that's one thing that we really wanted us to do. Over the next month, we will be sending you out schedules, additional dates for you to put on your calendars because, as you know, from now till the middle of June, we're going to be going at least one event a week, sometimes multiple on a week, so...
Sometimes multiple on a night.
Yeah.
So just, we will, as soon as we get them, we will send them out to you, okay? So we'll do that. And then, right before vacation, we had the opportunity to open up the West Elementary Kindergarten Playground. And I know that the West Elementary PTA came before the school committee and they had these plans of what they wanted to do. And to actually see a playground come together so quickly, so organized, and to have it, you know, ribbon-cutting was absolutely wonderful to see the kids go off and play and enjoy themselves and... To see the kids go off and play and enjoy themselves and to be in a safe environment, that there, there isn't, you know, pieces of equipment that were not going to harm them or anything like that was wonderful. So it, it was a great day. And I just want to reach out to the PTA at West Elementary for their hard work, their diligence, and for actually coming before you, proposing it and making it happen in a short period of time. Hats off to them. So, thank you. Back to you.
Any committee members with questions or follow up to Dr. Maestis' report? I would add one thing, and I was, I was telling Ms. Haywood during the break, that students who weren't able to attend the Stop the Bleed have heard about it. And they're beginning to ask questions about, you know, that they've all gotten CPR over the years and they've gotten other sorts of things. They were worrying about, when can we get something like this? So it may, it may have a life of its own pretty soon.
And to that point. Yeah, I, I think it was, the, the word about the training kind of spread through the kids themselves. And I don't know necessarily it was all that because it was on the news, but I think the kids were talking about it to their friends about what they learned. And I think that was a powerful way for that to actually get into our model, you know?
Ms. Haywood?
Okay. I just wanted to just thank, I guess, the school committee. Thank you, Dr. Maestis, for, because honestly, it was truly within the hour. So you, I was someone who you didn't know. And me kind of being a freshman here on this school committee for just taking the risk. Taking the risk and allowing the program. And actually, you know, helping to create a program that is actually going to be sustainable. I'd also like to thank Carolyn Rains, the Plymouth School Nurses, also Allison Reardon, who I know after a while, listen to everybody, my constant contact. And, and she was just, she was wonderful. She was absolutely wonderful. And, and most of all, the biomedical students who were absolutely phenomenal that day. They were exceptional. They, I think even after this experience, I realized that our future is in good hands.
Thank you. Excellent. Ms. Hunt?
I was just going to echo what you said, and I was totally impressed having been able to see most of it. And I was, I, I did the training too. And I feel like I could probably, I was really nervous thinking back to like my Girl Scout days, like, is this going to be really involved? If it's going to be something that under pressure I'm not going to remember? But it was totally, not easy, but I think I could do it if I had to. And having my daughter participating too, I've witnessed her tell tons of people about her experience. And she's explaining it to them and, and everyone's doing the same thing, like, well, why did these kids get picked? Or how did this happen? And, you know, can we learn this too? And I think it's going to be infectious. And it's something that I think all the kids are realizing. I'm trying, so the, the spin that's a little scary on it, I don't think that happened. I think the kids just realized that this is a tool. We might not think about why we are going to have to use this, but hey, if something happens or if I'm out in the lawn and somebody cuts their finger off, this is, I know how to handle this.
Yes.
And I even feel a little bit better about it myself, having done the training. So it's, I'm, thank you for inviting us and letting us come as well.
Ms. Badger?
I agree, same thing. I, although I, I did appreciate the students who were like, I don't know if I'd be able to do it. Could we add like a squirming? That was my favorite quote.
They wanted squirming dummies.
Could we make a squirming dummy? Dummy, that was my favorite. Because it's true, you know, it would be different. But it was, they wanted one that was a little bit more lifelike, you know? I was like, ah, I don't know if I could have put my hands in a more lifelike. But it was amazing. And just watching the kids light up as they were learning, that was the best part of the whole day, that they really could tell that they were fully engaged and.
And teaching, like I watched my daughter teach Bella how to do it. And I was in tears because it was just amazing because they were showing each other how to do it. It was pretty cool.
Everybody was so articulate in the interviews. It was amazing, yes. Very mindful of the words they chose and just how they, what they said. It was, I mean, I joked to Ms. Hunt that it was a good thing that she wasn't there when they were doing the, because she would be a blubbering mess. But I think the two of us are both like, don't cry, don't cry. Because they were just so impressive and what they were saying was just, it blew you away.
I just, just to channel the sentiments, thank you Vedna for all your hard work and, and the school committee. We should be proud, I think Plymouth should be proud. Some of the progress we've made with not only implementing prevention as one of the first districts in the nation to do that.
That's right.
But to also be on the forefront with the Stop the Bleed. So it's, it's an impressive group we have here, but a more impressive school district and very impressive students. So, job well done, thank you everybody.
Well said, well said, I appreciate that. We appreciate that. Any other, anything else at this point?
I have to, I just have to say this. So I'm, I'm in New Mexico when this thing went on CBS, okay? And I'm sitting, I'm sitting with my parents. And I said, got to get up early because I think it's going to be on, right? And I said, what's going to be on? Well, I think I might be on TV. So we get up.
You didn't know it was that national either.
No, no, no. And then we get up at six, well, six, that's eight o'clock here. But it doesn't, it came out at eight o'clock. So I'm watching TV for two hours, my mom and dad, between Gunsmoke and. And then the phone starts ringing because my relatives from California, I don't, nobody knows what I do. I don't, I've never told, I don't tell them. But they're like, that was my nephew once.
They think you're a physician.
Yeah, something like, I don't know. But anyway, now my family knows that I have a job.
They got your name right.
Very important job. Yeah, they said it right.
Said your name right.
They did say my name right.
All right, moving into the health curriculum, anything we need to report this evening on the health curriculum?
Just a couple of brief things since we met, met two weeks ago. Won the grant that Dr. Rogers said for the Behavioral and Emotional Health, which actually also was able to, we were able to purchase the second step curriculum for every teacher at the preschool. So now we will have a pre-K to, pre-K through high school approach to all of that. So we're really, we're really, really excited about that. And, actually, that's it.
Any questions on that?
I just have a question, a couple. So my question now is, we've been talking about bringing in like the PE teachers and everybody into the overall teaching of the curriculum or the, I guess, the support pieces of the curriculum. Have we brought them into the discussion yet or are we still in that early stages?
Yeah, we, we're constantly in that discussion, but it's going to take time. Something like that takes a lot of time. We do a lot of curriculum work in the summer across all grade levels, departments. We spend weeks and weeks and weeks, particularly in the summer because teachers are so busy during the school year. We really try to work on their development, but we do, we are working on that. We are bringing them into the conversation to see, you know, I really see that as something that we will continue to work on regardless of, you know, the level of implementation in terms of formal health curriculum. So we're always looking at, how can we reinforce that through physical education classes, certain strands of the health curriculum? What kind of school nurses do? You know, what kind of programs do we bring in? So we'll be constantly looking at that. But we will have a guaranteed curriculum from, you know, K to five for the elementary schools, which will include the physical education. So a lot of that will continue into the summer and to continue to roll out beyond that. But yes, there's been some discussions, but not, we haven't done extensive work with phys ed. We're really focusing on the, the health educators first.
Any other questions about the health curriculum? Okay, none. Moving on then to retirements.
Yes, we have three retirements to report tonight. Margaret Foley, a math teacher at Plymouth North High School for 29 years. Diane Martin, a library media paraeducator at South Middle School for 18 years of service. And Duncan McCauley, a second shift custodian, 16 years of service from Indian Brook Elementary School. So a lot of years.
On behalf of Plymouth Public Schools, I'd like to, and the school committee, I'd like to thank these individuals for their service and wish them a happy retirement.
Thank you. Correspondence, Mr. Morgan?
No correspondence this evening.
Thank you. Fundraising, anything to report under fundraising? Dr. Campbell?
Just want to highlight the, the new section that we added to the table on the bottom. It's in the green, the green column. So each page you'll see, depending on the school or the organization, has their own tab. So you can see exactly what's the gross net receipts and the return for the overall fundraisers. So we're trying to, we're trying to simplify it and make it as user friendly as possible as we gather all this data.
Awesome.
Questions on that?
Thank you.
Okay, that's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Reports and proposals from committee members. Ms. Badger?
So the first one I have an update. So on Saturday at six o'clock, if anybody is bored, they can come and go to the Plymouth, Plymouth No Place For Hate Coffee House, which we're having, it's rescheduled from our one that was canceled in February, with all of our proceeds will go to the, oh my gosh, my words are missing.
Oh, the Outstanding Citizenship.
Oh, Citizen, Outstanding Citizenship Award that we, we will give out to two students from Plymouth in June, I believe, is when we're going to be giving it out.
The one for students at North and South High School.
So it's for any student in Plymouth, but we do give the applications to the Plymouth North and Plymouth South.
Oh, all right.
But we can't be, because it's a town, yes. But because we're a town committee, we are not able to just say Plymouth South, Plymouth North. So, we assume that that's probably where they will come from, but we, we will see. And then we had a Plymouth Area Collaborative meeting a while ago. And I just wanted to say that the enrollment is up and everything's looking pretty good there. So hopefully by the end of the year, we will be, you know, where we think we're supposed to be on budget. And we're still in the process of potentially looking to purchase a certain building in Plymouth, fingers crossed. So that we can bring the collaborative to where it is more centrally located for the schools that they're, the schools and the students that they support. So that's about, that's about it.
Excellent. Ms. Hunt?
I told Mr. Pinto that I would mention an event coming up for him because he was unable to make it for public comment. Can I throw it out to him and see if you, do you, would you like to announce or do you want me to? Yeah, do you want to just say something really quick about it? It's a Fund Our Futures Rally on May 16th, and we're invited. If you guys, if you guys don't mind. I think he's a little bit more articulate.
Yeah, I'll just be brief. As we know, the, the Fund Our Future Formula, the campaign going on to change the overall.
Formula.
Formula, thank you. Formula for, to get more money for Chapter 70. May 16th in Boston, it's a Thursday. There's going to be a rally at the State House coming through. It's going to basically be an all-day event starting at one, but the, through the MTA, we'll be talking about setting, setting up buses coming from areas. Plymouth would be an area sponsor. We'd love to invite any committee members, anybody in the community in general. The idea is to get people up there to, you know, ask our legislators to, you know, please, you know, fund our education, fully fund it. So that'll be May 16th. Like I said, I believe the bus will be leaving from Plymouth around 3:30. I have a QR code scanner that you can, okay, they have. And again, it's leaving at 3:30, I know it's a tough time. We understand that with, you know, especially where we are down the South Shore to come up. But, you know, get up there, show support. There's going to be, you know, try to make it family friendly, especially around the 4:30, 5 o'clock. I think food trucks, different activities for people to go. And then they'll be doing marches to the State House. So, again, everybody in the community is invited and trying to support education.
And wear red for Ed that day.
Red for Ed, yep, so, absolutely.
Already coordinated.
It's like I planned it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Ms. Hunt, any else?
That's it.
Any else from proposals?
I was just going to, I was just going to add that it's going to be huge because I know we've got the email with the APA Union. And so they're trying to get people from all the public higher eds as well because it's obviously for both funding formulas.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say a little bit more about what, what Michelle had brought up. And that was about the coffee house that's coming up this Saturday night. And it's really, it's the.
It's going to be great.
Rainout date from the Martin Luther King Day celebration. So if, if people can go to it, I know some of the performers. But anyhow, it's, it's a good function, it's free, and there's going to be free refreshments, so it's.
Where's it at? Ms. Burgess, where's it at?
It's at the Church of the Pilgrimage in Town Square, 6 o'clock.
6:00 PM?
It's really good.
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
I'm making a cake.
Yeah, so people are making, yeah. And then they, they said they'll promise to have gluten-free. They're going to have gluten-free and all this stuff.
I'll make some gluten-free cookies.
They don't want to eliminate anybody. Unfortunately, I'm volunteering at the Spire that night, so I can't.
We'll make an American flag cake.
Signed up before I knew this date, yeah. Okay. PYDC. It was kind of a strange meeting because it wasn't a mini, a mini thing.
No mini training.
That teaches about and, mini training. And it was just sort of a, a list of things that are, they're doing or coming or whatever. So it's going to be a little bit different. I did want to say that Massachusetts Promise Fellow, each year they have a body of America who are Promise Fellows, nonprofit organizations, city agencies and schools across the Commonwealth. And this year, we're going to be having a fellow that's going to serve at Plymouth North High School and will work to lead a group of youth in programming focusing on mentoring academic enrichment, college career readiness. And he's going to work directly with the school and the PYDC as well as the YMCA. So that, that's a good thing, yeah. And there's having the sticker shop update. The winning, the winning sticker, oh, was, was done by Sage, who's a seventh grader at PCIS. And it's going to go up in 19 of the alcohol retail establishments in Plymouth. So it's that time of year when they really need to be out. The, I wanted to bring up this prescription drug takeback that's, that's coming up. They, this is the second one now. What are they doing, monthly?
Oh, no, I don't think it's my place.
They do it all the time, a quarter, for years.
Because, no, no, but they, but you could drop them off at the police station. This is very different than that. And they had one last month and now they have one in April 27th.
Yes, at Walmart.
But it's from 10 to 2 at Walmart. So people can go and drop it.
They had the bill, the street signs lit up on Colony Place.
Oh, do they? Oh, okay, that's good, yeah. That's good. Yeah, so anyway, that, that's important because it's coming right up. And, and I got a whole bunch. I went and cleaned out all my prescription drug stuff. What a mess. So anyhow, is, and then they were talking about having a pre-prom event at the Spire. I think it's going to be at the Spire. And what date was that? That's terrible. Because I didn't write the date down on here, I just put six to, oh, 5:22?
I think it's the Wednesday before prom.
Yeah. Yeah. And from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, it's Taylor's message and it's, it's. The thing I couldn't understand was, why did they want a public venue versus using a school? They asked me that.
Because Plymouth Youth Development Collaborative is not solely for the schools and it's open to the community, so I think they're just looking for community support.
Yeah, community support, that's right downtown and, yeah, people in a familiar location.
And it, it's, it's hard to get our buildings in those. And the other reason was that our buildings were already booked on those days with elementary.
They're free that night.
Band performances.
And I talked to Kevin, but I've, I've.
Yes.
That's great.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
It's available.
Huh?
It's available.
It is available, so I had given, I.
Kelly.
Kelly hit the information.
Excellent.
So she can contact him. I gave his cell phone and his email, so she'll be, she'll get in touch with him. And let's see, and then they were talking about, they had gone to Duxbury and they saw a movie called Angst. They, and they want to bring it, I guess, into the school. I, I don't know who went to see it. PYDC I'm sure did, but, but anyway, that should be, that should be interesting as well. But I guess that's, that's it. It was just, there were so many things, it was like a list of 30 or 40 things. There's nothing you can't, we can't. nothing you can't, we can't talk about at all now. Okay.
All right. Thank you for bringing that back to the committee. Is there a building committee report?
Yes.
I didn't go, he did.
I was at the last meeting. I left my notes. My car was all this rain. But the parking garage is open below, and they're waiting to seal coat the top layer. They awarded the bid to the general contractor for the Harbor Masters Building. Construction's ongoing at the library, and they continue their work on preparing to build the North Plymouth Fire Station.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Leaves of absence. Personnel?
Yes, personnel. We have had seven co-chair advisor appointments, one classified appointment, one long-term maternity, five short-term maternities, and three resignations.
Thank you for that report. Any questions? Counselor Fable?
Nope, I got it. Where a school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the Warrant for Review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant number S042519 dated April 25th, 2019, in the amount of $2,750,909.76 as presented.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Ms. Burgess has a second on that one? Is there a question on the warrant? Ms. Badger?
I just want to say that I'm going to abstain from it, because my reimbursement is in this.
Actually, I am too.
So.
Yeah, we found it.
Two reimbursements in that warrant?
And yours is two.
Okay.
So, do we have a quorum?
Yes, well, no, it'll pass.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take the vote on that then. Okay, we have...
I don't know if yours was, is it?
I haven't put it in.
Oh, you haven't put it in? Then you're fine.
Yes, you're fine.
Yeah, you're fine.
It didn't, it didn't come up as to who abstained. East...
Not yet.
Oh, here it comes now. Okay. All right. So, that is passed. Five voting in favor. Thank you. We have the minutes of March the 4th. What's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Badger?
I just have an edit on page three. It says this, it says, Ms. Badger inquired about our teachers having the ability to teach 25%, blah, blah, blah. It's that paragraph. And then it says, Dr. Miasis said that there are certain pieces of this model, this too. So, it should be, that is a perfect fit, perfect and natural fit for the classroom.
I concur.
That's it.
Okay. I'm laughing, because I saw that this afternoon. Anything else? We have, now with that correction, do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
Yes.
Ms. Hunt moves it with the correction. Is there a second? Ms. Burgess has a second? Any other questions on that motion? All right. We will take the vote on it then. Okay, thank you. And now we have executive session of the 18th. Is there a motion, Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the executive session minutes as presented.
It's been moved. It's been seconded by Mr. Morgan. Is there a second on that one? Is there a question on that one? Okay, we'll vote on that one. Okay, that's excellent. And now we have the minutes of March the 18th. What's the pleasure of the committee? Ms. Badger?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
We have a motion to approve. Second by Ms. Burgess. Is there a question on that, on the minutes of the 18th? Okay. Please vote. Thank you. We have some sewing machines to disperse of.
Tonight, we have 15 sewing machines that are no longer in need of service, and they will be disposed of. And this is from Plymouth South Middle School. So, the recommendation of administration is to proceed with this as a disposable of equipment item.
You've heard the recommendation of administration regarding the obsolete equipment.
Yes. Oh, I'll move it.
Ms. Burgess moves the recommendation. Second by Ms. Badger. Is there a question on that? Okay, then we'll vote on the, on the obsolete equipment. All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing matters relative to litigation. Do I have a motion to do that? Mr. Selly is the motion for executive session. Ms. Burgess is the second. Does anybody have a question on that? We're going to take the votes going around. Mr. Selly?
Yes.
Ms. Burgess, chair votes, yes. Ms. Hunt, Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Badger?
Yes.
The school committee is going into executive session for the purposes stated. At the end of executive session, the only business that will happen in an open session is the adjournment of the meeting. Thank you very much.